Welcome to the April 19th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. It is being audio and video recorded. If you'd please stand and raise some flag. I'd like to welcome Jeff Ryan to the Board, our newest member. Congratulations Jeff, you're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Excited to be here.
First item on the agenda is to reorganize the Board. So we have a Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. If anyone has any... Denise?
I would make a motion to appoint Anthony Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to appoint Denise as the Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I think it just defaults to Clerk, but I'll make a more... a motion to appoint... for Jeff to be the Clerk.
Second.
All in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we have a couple appointments now with the vacancy with the change in selectmen. So the Serge's Signatory is... position is now open. I'm not sure if you really know what that is. It's really just services, like a municipal aggregate organization that kind of puts things out together. So was Selectman Anderson. I don't know if anyone has interest in taking on that role.
I'll take that, if that works.
Good for me.
Good for me. Do we need a...
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to appoint Jeff, the Serge's Signatory.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have the calendar for the second half of the year. Tentative dates all seem to look fine to me. I don't know if anyone knows of any concerns at this time, or we can always make adjustments to the calendar as needed. Now, when I was anything, is there a motion to approve the calendar as presented?
Motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we need a representative for the Old Colony Planning Council.
Yeah, just so you're aware, this again was a position that Mary filled, or Miss Anderson filled. We will also need to apply... appoint someone to Old Colony OCPC in general. So she actually sat on two committees, as her predecessor Eldon did. We have received that email or that letter in, so we put this one on the agenda. But it can be one person, it could be a combination of the two, whichever you prefer.
Do you know when they typically meet?
I don't. This one here is fairly active. I want to say they meet at least once a quarter, if not once a month. This is the committee that advises OCPC, that ultimately goes to DOT for TIP related projects, like when we did the Center of Town.
But their meetings are typically day meetings, right?
They are.
Yeah. And in Brockton in person?
They have been, yes. Although, I do know for a period of time they did do remote. I don't know if they continue to do not.
Okay. Is anyone able, or want to do it? I don't know. A little more challenging with timing?
Yeah, I mean if it's in Brockton, it's... it wouldn't be that bad.
We can also hold off a week, or a meeting.
That's correct, because recall, this one here, you recommend someone. And then if there's somebody else from a small-sized town like us, they may choose that other person. You know, automatic. And Mary did it because nobody else was willing to do it from the other communities. But we are gonna need a rep eventually from OCPC.
Okay. I mean, we can table it a couple weeks and see if we get more info on how often they meet, when they meet.
Sure, yeah. The timing would be helpful.
That would be good to know.
Anyhow, first of all, alright, so we will table that. David, do you want to go over the speed hump? Paul, see to you.
Yeah. So, um, so we have a handful of residents here, some of them that I've been dealing with over the past six weeks or four weeks. But the truth of the matter is, is that the town of West Bridgewater, we just... we have had continuous complaints about speed throughout the entire town. Currently, this evening, we have representatives from Harvest Wood, and from Scotland. But I can also tell you that I've received copious amounts of complaints from Pleasant Street, Lincoln Street, Prospect, not to mention the larger roads such as the South and North Elms, for example, in that field, and in our mainly. We have to do something. So I've been looking at this for a period of time, for maybe more than six months, trying to figure out, what do we do? And right now, what we do do is that we increase our police presence wherever we can. So we did that both in Scotland and on Harvest Wood recently. But the reality is, is that at any one time, we have a maximum of four police officers on, but usually three with a sergeant. We just can't be everywhere, and we can't put heavy enforcement. So what can we do in order to be able to reduce speeds, and do it on a more consistent basis, and try to keep our residents as safe as possible? So it turns out that speed humps, basically, speed bumps on steroids, is actually a pretty consistent use of them down south and out west. Less used in the northeast. I'm not exactly sure why, but they're much more prevalent in other areas of the country. There are some areas in the northeast that do use them. Framingham uses them to a decent amount. Ton has a handful of them. Devon's has a couple of them, and I know today there was one being installed, or a couple of them being installed in the North Shore community. I think Saugus, but I may have that wrong. The engineer told me, I just am not exactly sure, I mean. With that said, we started looking at it. Originally, I was being quoted a price of around $3,000 per speed hump. That price has now been escalated where the minimum price I received was $4,500. And if engineering is involved, they can run $7,000 to $9,000. The hope at the time, when it was a much less expensive option, was to have residents from the town, because I really want to empower residents. Like, I don't think it should be me, or the DPW, in my opinion, and the Board's in charge. But in my opinion, it wouldn't be the Board. It should be the residents who say, "We want this." Because some people are not gonna want it on the street, but the resident... it should be empowered by the residents. So that's how I always originally envisioned it. Is that the resident would come in, fill out a form, tell us where they want it, but I would have the residents pay for it. So if you have 20 homes on that road, and it came out to be $4,000, it's like $80 a person. It's a one-time fee. They pay that amount, it's done, and we would install it. If you want multiple, obviously you would times to buy that multiple. In good conscience, as we continue to go down this road, I can't personally, I could never justify asking residents for $9,000 per hump. It just gets too expensive, if that's the way it comes out to. But one hump by itself on a road the size of Scotland, I don't think is gonna be that effective. What will happen is, if you put it in the middle, they will accelerate to that point, and then they will accelerate after that to try to make up the time. And, um, or if you put it on one end, the opposite will happen. So we like to try to use data in our decision-making. So we did put out... we did do a speed survey on Scotland Street over the past couple of weeks. You'll see that it's timely. It's April 9th through April 17th. You'll see that we have total volume just over that period of time of almost 15,000 cars, which sounds pretty silly for a road that size. And where it's located should just be a nice residential road, average of 1,800 per day. You only have about 50 homes on there, so think about it, 1,800 is obviously a lot of outsiders. You can see the minimum speed and the maximum speed, the average speed of 30. And during that period of time, we did issue 51 citations for speeding. We know that as a result of that, that speeding will come down. But again, we can't put police there every single day of the year. And at this point, we have transitioned them over to Harvest Wood, because we're collecting data on that road as well. But, um, but that road is another issue. And here, this here is just a dispersion, and that's my handwriting on the bottom. But I thought that it was interesting of note, that over a two-week period of time, you still have, even though the average speed was 33 miles an hour, you still had 1,500 people actually at 41-plus. So I'm gonna assume that the 33 miles per hour is actually lowered from the people who live there. Because you're driving into your home, you know, you might only be doing 13 miles an hour to drive and pull into your parking lot, into your driveway. So, um, so in any event, this was the data.
Was this done with the blinking one that tells you your speed?
Yep.
So that also may slow down?
That is correct.
And also, the 51 citations was the weeks prior to this. This was after, and the police chief had mentioned that he thinks the reason why the speeds were so reduced is because of the police presence prior. So that's why they were slowing down.
So, so we need to do something. I have spent a lot of time on this over the past couple of months, and certainly more so over the past week. I have met with an engineer that we normally do business with. I've met with the DPW Director. I've made phone calls to other municipalities, and I spoke to the police chief as well. And there's a lot of research on speed humps, if you go online. What I would like to recommend at this point, and I... this is not the best option, and I only came to it today. It actually is a little inconsistent with what I said to Heather last night when I talked to her. But I... what I'd like to recommend to the Board right now is to do a pilot program on Scotland Street, and for us to purchase a couple of temporary speed humps. Based on what the engineer that I spoke to today, he thinks it's gonna run us about $2,000 for one, and probably about $1,500 to $1,800 for the second. The reason the pricing is different is because wrapped up in the first one, you would put up signs, you have to do some notice to people. We spoke to DOT. DOT said that we have to give a couple of weeks of notice before we actually install anything. So there's limited exposure to the municipality. So we would do that. We'd have to put some signage out. That's obviously got some expense to it. Let's say roughly $4,000 for two temporary ones. I think we put two temporary ones out, we run it as a pilot program. I'll defer to the Board as to how long you want to try it for, or maybe we try it for a month, or two months, and we get feedback from residents. I will tell you, I think it's going to slow speeds down. We will get complaints, because somebody's gonna hit it too fast. I will also tell you that there's ample evidence online, that as people hit them, that the resident that's most closest to doesn't like it, because they're noisy, if you hit it too fast. And that's gonna be complaints as well. And so I would ask the residents, as part of this policy that I drew up, I actually put an area where they could draw in, where they want to put the humps themselves, because I really don't want to be the one to do it. And I think that they would know their road the best, as to where we could place it. But I think that we provide that as a temporary solution, and we study it, and then we might be able to duplicate it moving forward. They're temporary, so if a truck hits it too fast, obviously it's gonna potentially damage it. They are meant to be lifted, so during the winter months, we can remove them. We're not gonna put them down in between snowstorms, if this is something we want to do going forward, so winter becomes an issue. But every time you saw ice, or hit it with a plow truck, you're gonna rip them up and damage them, so we can't do that. But now where we have some good weather, I think we can collect some sort of data, and we can give it a shot. I will disclose this. The town cannot afford to purchase 100 speed bumps. Now, we can't fund all our budgets this year. We already know that that's gonna be an issue going forward at town meeting. And I think most people know that issue, so there's no sense in having more conversations about it. But I feel bad that we can't fund all of our budgets, and then we're still gonna go out and purchase speed humps. And then there's no way, because I can guarantee you, we're gonna get inundated, if the town pays 100% for it. You will get inundated with requests to do them, and then you're gonna have to pick and choose, and it's gonna be impossible. It's like telling which child that you love the most. You can't do it. So I don't have a real good, long-term solution yet, but my recommendation is that we try this first, and then we make some decisions from there, and look for feedback from residents as to whether or not they thought that it was effective or not.
I like that idea.
I did... I'll throw this out. I did call a couple asphalt companies, and I... one of them is in Bridgewater, and he's done these numerous places, and he's done work at Lucini's and stuff, and he says that he charges us $1,200 each. As long as there's no engineering, which I know you said was because there's no sidewalks and stuff, he goes, "I just did three for $3,600." He goes...
Well, if that's the case, then that becomes much more reasonable.
Right.
That's not the pricing that we're getting, but by all means...
Right. I was just saying, I just want to throw that out there. That... it's all over the board.
It is.
Prices, I mean, you know.
Do we have to go with prevailing wage?
Yeah, but we would just... we would bid it out.
Okay.
So we would bid it out, and, um, and again, we have to come up with a template. We can't have one that's four feet wide, six feet wide, eight... you know, there have to be some standard... standardization to it. So we'll figure that part out.
That's what I was gonna ask you too, is if it can go... obviously, it's gonna cross both lanes.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
They have molds too, that they use.
Correct.
And he says you can also stagger them, which I think would be stupid, because you people would be... Even crossing... even going across in the double line, you know what I mean? But I think having it go all the way across.
Yeah.
You have... and they have a standard mold that they use, and like I told him, the 22 between 26 feet across, based on that, you know, the price a little bit. But he says that they do this all the time. He goes, "It's..." he goes, "It makes people slow down." He goes, "They have no choice. Like you said, you can go 15 miles and over, you know, over it. But if you... as long as you have the proper sign before to warn people, I mean, it's... it's a permanent fixture, and it's... it's gonna make people slow down, and it's gonna keep our kids safe and our neighborhood, and, you know."
It may divert a lot of traffic too. I'm thinking they may come in off of 104 to go to Amazon, you know what I mean? That's what I'm hoping, you know. We can divert a lot of that traffic that's supposed to Amazon, and the industrial side in the Bridgewater, and to come in off of 104, of course, you're gonna cut down the traffic on Scotland Street.
Look, I'm glad you said that, because that's certainly what I... was... I should have stated earlier. That is also one of my hope and goals. For example, Prospect Street. Everybody goes down North Elm and uses it as a cutoff to get to 106, but too many trucks are doing it. We need to keep them on North Elm and make them turn to Route 106. And if you put these speed humps on there, you are going to have people save. Because quite frankly, what are you saving? A minute?
What?
Literally, a minute is all you're saving. So if you put the speed humps, that speed hump is going to make that minute disappear, and we can keep them on the main roads. And if we can do it on Scotland, you know, if the Board is okay with it, we'll go out, we'll purchase a couple of temporary ones, we'll give it a shot. I would like to discuss it with you and whomever else on the street, so that we...
I have about 20 people that are on board.
But where you want to put it. I don't want to put it directly in front of a house where the person's upset.
No, I think we have plenty of wood there.
You kidding me?
Yes, that we can find.
Not to mention the sounds from 24. This is nothing.
Heather wants it right in front of her house.
I don't care where... I mean, like I said, I mean, you know, there's people that I'm sure are gonna be... know it's too loud, and completely understand it. I, you know, but I know that there's people that, you know, like you said, there's wooded areas, there's... in between, you have like, I think, in my opinion, I think a few houses after you come into Br... West Bridgewater from the bridge, and then maybe a little bit past Maple Street, I think that chunk is where we see a lot of the speeding. So, I mean, and...
I agree.
You know, I mean, because down towards the other end, not saying it's not fast, I mean, I feel bad if people try and get their mail and try to garden it, you know? But I think, like I've said to you, you know, people that don't know the area, they come from a commercialized area, and then it's all wooded, and they're like, "Oh, great," and they're flying, then bam, you're in a residential area. And it takes you by surprise, and it's like, yeah, you see the thickly settled in 30 miles an hour, but who's actually looking at this on this?
So I... I like the idea, but I just don't... my... my only concern is putting a Band-Aid on a problem. So I think we should be putting some funds towards speed, you know, doing a project, speed home project in the future. Because clear... I mean, I bet money that we're going to find these work, and...
I agree.
Right? But then what do we do afterwards? Then we take them away, and we try it somewhere else, and your problem is going to reoccur again. So if we at least have a fund established, and I don't know if it's too late now to say, take $100,000 and put it into an article, so that we can get through the pilot study, and then have, if this works, have funds available to use. And the town votes on it, so it's the town's decision. They're either gonna say, you know, "We feel your pain, and we think funds should go there," or they're going to say, "No, you don't get the money." And if they... if they vote "no," then they're voting for the whole town. No one will get speed humps. But again, I think we definitely should move forward with buying them and doing a pilot study. And I think we should have some... have some funds ready, because if it works, don't you want them installed?
Aye, absolutely.
Aye, yeah. They... I think it's... it's no question at this point. It's... it has... something has to change, because the street has... I mean, everything's evolving, so we need to evolve with it. And we need to figure out ways to, you know, keep everybody safe, and, you know, as we've talked about, you know, we have 100 homes going across the street, so we're getting the traffic from them now. We're yet... we have the Amazon, which, I mean, I can't even tell you how many people from out of state are just flying up and down the street, because they work for them. And then we have all the other commercial buildings there, and then if 24 is backed up, we get their traffic, it's a cut-through. I mean, and it's a straight shot street. It's not like a weave in, it's... I mean, it's just... it's a runway.
So I don't know, is it too late for this town meeting?
You have to... you... the Board can do whatever it wants, if you want to change existing language in one of the articles that you've already, you know, because you guys voted on articles.
The sidewalk one.
The sidewalk, but also the engineering one. I think you're better off, you'd be... because we have not had that one in the past. So we could look at the engineering one. Obviously, you're sacrificing at that point.
What about free cash?
Well, that's how we're funding the engineering one, so we would take it out of the sidewalks, I mean, take it out of the engineering one. But if you want to change the language on the warrant article, we'll change the warrant on the... the language on the warrant article. It's gonna get posted next week, so we'd have to decide that this evening. And, um, and my recommendation is that we had set up... I made a recommendation to the Board, which the Board at that time had agreed, that because we did not have an engineering fund, so we could be ready for shovel-ready projects as they came, that we would set up that account, and I was placing $94,000 into that account as initial seed money. So if you want to take that $94,000 and say, "Okay, we won't do any engineering, we'll put it in for speed humps," well, you can do that. But again, everybody should know, we are losing projects, because we have no shovel-ready projects. I just looked at it today from OCPC, the TIP list for the state 2024 to 2028, 2029, there's about $44 million worth of state-approved projects moving forward in this county. We have zero. Not a single one, because we don't have any engineering on staff to get prepared and ready, so we were trying to do that. So if you want to do it, that's fine. You just know that you're sacrificing from somewhere else.
So I'd rather see it in the sidewalks, just adding that in there, so it could be used for either.
Right. Why can't we just do sidewalks slash speed humps?
You can. You have $150,000 in there.
Right.
So if you want to do it, that's fine, but if you spend $75,000 in speed humps, you're not gonna get any sidewalks over the next year.
Right, but then at least we'll... we'll... we can be moving the temporary ones around, trying them on various streets, while we're at the same time installing them where we know we definitely need them. And then in 2025, at town meeting, try to divert more cash towards speed humps.
However you want to present. I mean, my feeling is, is that if we put them on Scotland, and they're effective, and we have money, then what we would do is we would install permit ones on Scotland, and then we would take those temporary ones and say we'd put them on Harvest Wood. And then once we have money, we can then convert those into permit ones, and then move them again. Again, sooner or later, they're not gonna last forever, because they're temporary ones.
Right.
But maybe that's how we start it. I just... obviously, if... I don't know how much we're going... if you do the sidewalk fund, you're going to sacrifice doing sidewalks this coming year, because $150,000 doesn't already go that far anyway. So depends on how much you want to spend on speed humps. And that's why I still think it's gonna be... it's... every other part of the country I saw, residents had to chip in. They either paid half, or they paid all of it. The Board doesn't want to do that, that's okay. But you will get immediately inundated with 100 requests, which you're not gonna be able to do for a couple of years, and we're gonna aggravate people. You're not gonna have enough money. And if you want to put all of the money into humps and do no sidewalks, you can do that, but you're gonna... you won't get any sidewalks this year.
Well, I like the thought of the temporary first, and then becoming permanent. Because I think of Harvest Wood, not that... I have friends that live there, I understand people fly there and go too fast. I wouldn't want to divert all the Harvest Wood speeders, if you will, to Spring Street either, by the schools. So like, there's value for me in the test first, and then... and then the permanent placement, like, just that... that approach. And then we will figure out what... what else we can do at Harvest Wood, should that happen. But I just, you know, there's so many kids walking up and down Spring, we can't let that be the result of speed humps at Harvest Wood either.
But yeah, Denise, what we can do is, when we get to the warrant articles, the Board can take a vote to amend the language. And that way it can be used for speed humps, and then we can revisit it after we do the pilots. And then we can say, "Okay, what's our policy going to actually be with real data?"
I mean, we... and I... I appreciate 100% of what you're saying. People are going to get aggravated now, because someone got speed humps and... and we didn't. But there's only so much money to go around, so we're just going to have to take a pragmatic approach to it, and do as much as we can with the funds we have.
As a last resort, I mean, the people that I have talked to, they're okay with chipping in something. And I mean a last resort. Like, we're hoping that the town can step in and really kind of help us here. You know, but like I said, as a last resort, we're okay with chipping in a little bit, but it'd be nice, you know.
Of course.
We could go a different route, if... if possible.
But it has to be a policy. It can't be Scotland Street chips in, and Harvest Wood doesn't, or it... It has to be a policy where it's set that X percent, or whatever the number is, or how... whatever formula we come up with. Has to be consistent across the board. But I... I think when we get to talking about the articles, it might be a wise idea, maybe chip a... To make one of these a slash fund, and then if it... if it works, then get them on Scotland Street. And then we look at next year's budget and see what cash there is, and make a decision from there. I just sense it's going to work.
It's going to work.
Oh, it's going to work. And we test it, and it works, and then we take them away.
I... I spend a lot of time running. I live on Scotland, so I spend a lot of time running up and down the road into South Elm and into Bridgewater, so I can see at what points cars really start to accelerate. And one of the reasons I'm here today is because the frequency at which I'm being passed when I'm driving has been increasing over the last year steadily. And about a month ago, my wife was making a left-hand turn into our driveway. That car attempted to pass her, so she had to slam on her brakes, and the car kind of went up on our grass just to get by. So I think anything we can do to kind of limit, and especially the amount of cars that come out of the... the Amazon warehouse. Like, I run down there, and it's just a constant steady stream of right-hand turns, coming up over the bridge and accelerating.
They have sidewalks down in Bridgewater. We don't.
Right.
So we're literally like crossing the street or walking the street, you know, so...
There's no... it's a narrow road, and there isn't much...
It is now.
There's no buffer on either side. I'm... I'm pretty much just... when I'm running, I'm just, you know, dodging each car as they come, but...
Just trying to get out of your driveway. You can see them speed up, just so you... not to let you pull out of your driveway.
And then I think another consideration too is obviously the, um, the new subdivision going in, and you're looking at like 80 to 90 homes. And so those cars are gonna be turning out into, if we don't do anything, high-speed traffic. Especially in the mornings, when people use it as a cut-through, or in the evening for 24.
When 24 stops, you... you can't get out of your driveway. It's a constant...
It is. It's an extension of 24.
Well, that's today's world with ways and everything else. Everybody knows side roads that they didn't before.
And not to diminish what you're dealing with on Harvest Wood, because two times a day, I'm on your street, because it's a convenient cut-through. And there's always three or four cars either in front of me, behind me, there's, you know, it's the same time every day. And I slow down at 25, and they're right on my bumper, trying to get through, so...
I was sitting on my porch one, uh, well, actually, I think it was like Monday or something. Four cars weren't happy, and the person in front of them flew by them and passed on the double line. Four... four cars, in like, I think it was like 40 minutes, I was sitting on my front porch. I'm like...
Yeah, no, if...
Oh!
Look, I'm encouraged, if we could really do them at $12,000 apiece, that quite frankly, that is not cost prohibitive for the town. But if they get up to $5,000 or $6,000, it does. So we'll have to see what the pricing is, but let's try the temper. If you've got... if the Board's okay, if we... are you okay if we do two, and we'll try two on Scotland?
Sure.
Do we need to take a vote?
No, as long as you're just giving me direction. If you want to take a vote, you can, but as long as you're... the Board's comfortable with it.
I'm okay with two, yeah.
We'll... we'll add two, and we'll be in...
I think two would be sufficient.
And then we'll be in touch if they go where...
I think that'll do it.
Why don't you, if you don't mind, could you get together with the residents, determine where ideally you want them? Send me an email, and then maybe I'll come on and look at it with you, and then we'll go from there. Okay?
And the signage is... is the signage going to be permanent? Are they putting these signs right in the ground?
Heads up.
Yeah, so once we get that part... okay, goes back to my original, let's put some money aside, but...
So the signage for the temporary ones, though, how is that gonna work? Because obviously, they're still gonna have the same effect, and you don't want people to come flying up and then hit it, and then end up in somebody's yard. Which, I mean, if you go in that speed, it's gonna happen, but do... are they gonna put up some type of signs?
Yes.
Or even just like, "Yo, yellow sign"?
We'll put up signs, and we'll also... we will put up a warning sign in advance.
Okay.
So...
Just want to make sure to cover every...
No, it's...
Every sign.
That's what I was advised as directing to do, that's what we'll do.
Why you add, well, on the signs, the commercial vehicles, that we put signs up for them, that didn't stop either.
Well, then we... then you need to call the police.
Okay.
Please just call, because...
They're literally crazy.
Uh, all over, right?
Because of... Because if, if they are up there and they're in violation, the police can pull them over.
It's the local, the, they have a C with a green right up on Elm Street.
McCord, yeah.
But yeah, they've been trucking all day today.
Really?
Yeah.
I think, okay, all right. Yeah, please just call the police then.
All right, so we're good with that?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys for coming in.
We appreciate it, we really do. It means a lot.
Um, next item is the, um, recommendations, motions and readers for the town meeting warrant articles. David, do you want to run through them, and we'll at the same time decide who the readers are?
Sure. Yes, you can.
Unless you want to stay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. So Article One and Article Two are consent articles. They are normally run by, by the Board of Selectmen.
Volunteer. All right, Denise.
Um, Article Three would be a selectman as well.
I'll take it.
Article Four would be the finance committee.
Okay.
Article Five would be the assessors. Article Six, um, would be, um, DPW. Article Seven, and Article Eight, uh, would be CPC. Article Nine would be Scott Gold, the treasurer. Article Ten would be police chief. Article Eleven would be the school. Article Twelve will be DPW. Article Thirteen would be DPW. Article Fourteen is DPW. Article Fifteen is town clerk. Article Sixteen, DPW. Article Seventeen, DPW. Article Eighteen, DPW. Article Nineteen, DPW. Article Twenty, police. Article Twenty-one, fire. Article Twenty-two, fire. Article Twenty-three, council on aging. Article Twenty-four, council on aging. Article Twenty-five, school. Article Twenty-six and Twenty-seven is water. And Article Twenty-eight will either be a mem, it'll either be parlor bunker or somebody from the bylaw study committee, unless the board wants to move that one.
I'm good with, um, her, them doing it.
Yep.
Um, does anyone, so we'll do the readers first. We'll make that a motion. Is there a motion to, um, approve the readers, as David said, or does anyone have any changes they'd like to make?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Um, so now we have to vote on the recommendation of the articles, and then if we did want to change any, now would be the time. So the capital items are Articles fifteen through twenty-five. Um, town clerk, town clerk copier, DPW stump grinder, DPW air compressor, DPW LED lights, DPW garage heaters, um, police cruiser, fire admin vehicle, COA copier, COA flooring, and, um, school, the panels. So those are typically the ones that we may or may, we may not recommend. I personally am in favor of all of them. I don't know if anyone else has anything on those ones, or any others?
So that's fifteen through nineteen, or all?
Uh, fifteen through twenty-five are the capital budget items.
So I would make a motion to recommend Articles fifteen through nineteen?
Um, wanna do, do you want to do all of them?
Oh, okay. Sure.
Unless there's an article that someone doesn't want to recommend, but. Um, so is that a motion to recommend all?
I will make a motion to recommend all articles.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so we, we can make the change now, if anyone would like to include speed humps.
So.
Here'd be Article thirteen or fourteen. Um, if we do do it, I'd rather see it in Article thirteen, just, I can't see it being too much money. I think that'd still be plenty for sidewalks, or at least it would be kind of at our discretion, chance we don't spend any on speed humps. Um, I, I highly doubt we'd spend a significant amount. I can't imagine it being more than twenty or thirty the first year.
So I would make a motion to amend Article thirteen, so that, um, that the town votes transfer from free cash, the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand, to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the construction and engineering of sidewalks slash speed humps.
Okay, just add or, speed humps.
Or, or add or speed humps.
I think we can leave it up to David to change the languages.
Because at the very end, I'm gonna ask the motion that you take is gonna also be subject to final town council review, because we always have to change a couple of words.
Okay.
But we don't change the spirit of the article.
Okay.
But if you are, what you're telling me, or, 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 um, directing to me is Article thirteen will be expanded to include the construction, engineering of speed humps as well. We'll make that change.
Okay.
And we'll figure out the language.
You figure out the language. There's the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. And then, so is there a motion to accept all, um, articles as written with, um, final edits by town council?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, um, approve the meeting minutes of February fifteenth, March first, and March fifteenth. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Those are favor? Aye. I don't think you can.
You can't.
Jeff, that's why I, that's all right. Um, all those favor? Aye. Okay. Um, site plan review for contractors yard on Matfield Street.
So, this is an interesting one. Welcome to the board, Jeff. This is maybe the most controversial one we've ever had. Um, so, um, a little over a year ago, Denise came in the office, uh, she called me first, but she came in the office, she said, hey, we're on TV, and we have a composting yard in this town, and they're bringing all the food from Boston, and how'd that happen? And that's how we found out about it, because they never pulled permits, they never did anything. Um, and, um, so it turns out, um, if you could scroll just a few, because I put a picture, a Google sitemap in here. One more? There it is. So you'll see that in the top center, all of that area has all been excavated. Um, they access it from the Brockton side. There is no access from West Bridgewater. So you can see down the lower left-hand side, there's Route twenty-eight, there's the mobile home parks. And then as you go through the woods, that's re, right cut in half of where all of that area's been excavated or so. Um, that is the line between West Bridgewater and Brockton. So they literally went in there, cleared, and stopped composting and, and, um, and storing equipment. Um, I never physically have gone up there. I can only tell you what I've been told from other people who have, and what we can see, obviously, using, um, this service. We issued a cease and desist letter in August of last year, um, and they did, um, they eventually moved all of their apparatus off of West Bridgewater and moved it into the Brockton area. However, as you can see, some damage has been done, because there's been some clearing. Um, how much clearing, I can't tell you. I don't, I couldn't, I don't know. Um, in addition to that, the water department is really, really concerned, because you could see on the bottom where it's just West Bridge Water Water Department, and then you have the Plain River or the, the river basin, um, just north of it. A lot of that land, the water department owns, because it's an area that allows them to be able to recharge their water supply. And the concern is, is that where they are currently conducting work, whether it's on the West Bridge Water side or not, potentially leaches into that basin, that then potentially at least, um, um, gets into our water supply. So as a result, uh, we issued the cease and desist. It is, they're requiring that we would have to call for contractors yard. Because it's in the water resource protection area, it will go before the planning board. It's usually a ZBA, but this would be a planning board review, according to the, um, zoning enforcement officer. So, um, they'll go and look for their permit, um, and, you know, it's not very often that we make a recommendation that something just doesn't belong. I mean, we all believe in property rights, but I'm not so sure about this one, be, and, and so I think we have a couple of concerns. One is, is that if they were to be permitted, I would hope, and I'm gonna ask that the board requires this as part of your comments, is that there should be some type of a soil test done, some type of water tests done from the applicant. And that the town then, uh, the planning board is very well-versed in doing this, is that they hire a peer reviewer, uh, which is an independent reviewer that is skilled in this, that the applicant will also have to pay for. Um, and so that way, we have both their study and also an independent study to determine if there is any negative or adverse impact on our water supply. Um, assuming that there is, I would hope the planning board at that point would then deny it, based on having a detrimental impact. Um, assuming that there isn't, then the planning board will be free to do whatever they want. I would ask you to keep this on your radar, because if the engineering comes back and says that there is an adverse impact, they don't get permitted in West Bridgewater, and they stay on the Brockton side, that doesn't mean that we still may not have leaching into our water supply. We may have to legally revisit it at a later date. But again, that's a lot of ifs. I think right now, before the board, it's a matter of what your recommendation is to the planning board, whether you'd like to see it get permitted or not, and any, or any all, um, any other input.
Are they permitted in Brockton at all?
I do not know the answer to that. But I do know that in, in Brockton, that is industrial zoned. So they may be able to do it as, as of right, I'm not sure.
Would they have to build any roadway, is there, would, would anything change in that sense?
Um, well, they're using, there is an existing roadway from Brockton that accesses the site. Whether it's a private road or a public road, I'm not sure, because if you drive, I drove up there, I looked at it from a distance. To me, it just looks like a real long industrial driveway.
So that, but that driveway wouldn't need to be made into an actual street, like, you could see the driveway with that?
We wouldn't have jurisdiction, Brockton would have to weigh in on that.
Is having an impact on the water a reason to deny? Like, everything we do.
Yeah, it's public health.
Has negative impacts.
Yeah, but it's public health. If, if they could determine that, that there's, that there's a public health issue, or a potential public health issue, it's, it's a legitimate reason to deny. So the water department did include comments, if you don't mind, we could scroll to that. Um, they did include comments. Um, you know, so they documented some of their concerns, and they have sent that off to the planning board as well, um, and, um.
Yeah, but it, we can make recommendations, but we can't deny the project. That's all we can, that's all we can do, is make a recommendation.
Correct. According to the zoning enforcement officer, the planning board is the regulatory board with jurisdiction, so you make recommendations, but it is their final call.
I like the idea of the peer review for the water supply.
I think in addition to what Mike White, the building inspector, has indicated, as well as the water department, if for some reason this is, is permitted, and there is any type of leaching into the water supply, or any kind of spill, they should have a, a process for notifying the residents in the area and the town. There should be a policy, a procedure. It, it should, just shouldn't be, we have to wait, and then suddenly, two weeks later, three weeks later, we are notified. There, there should be a very strict policy and procedure with regards to the notification process.
Yeah, so, um, what we can do is to capture that, is that the recommendation to the planning board is for them to have what they refer to as an O and M plan, operations and management plan, that would actually spell out exactly what you just said about making, maybe, you want to require every thirty-six months, just making up a number, but every thirty-six months or twenty-four months, that there's some type of, uh, continuous, uh, testing to occur, and if there is something that comes back as adverse or negative, that there is a notification process, and also a potential that they would have to shut business down during that period of time.
Yeah, there would, that type of process, but I mean, there could come a point at which they have a spill, and they immediately know about it. That should be an immediate shutdown, and then a notification process to the town and the residents in the area. So they, they need to put together a policy and procedure that the planning board can look at and say, that yes, this is, it, this is what we need in place, and on top of that, I don't know if the planning board has any types of penalties they can attach to that, that if they don't act as the policy and procedure calls for. Because any, the, it, it's in the water district area, the water department is not, the, the water commissioners are definitely not in favor of it. Mike White has indicated that visits to the site, there's, um, some type of fluid seeping from piles. Uh, so th, this is more than, you know, definitely, there needs to be mitigation plans in the event that there's some sort of leakage, but if this gets permitted, th, there also needs to be a policy and procedure for notifying, and I think if they don't follow the policy and procedure, there should be a penalty attached to it. It just, it shouldn't be a matter of, oh, well, it didn't happen in twenty-four hours, but we, we got it done in a week. It should be, well, you didn't get it done in twenty-four hours, or whatever the reasonable time period is. So that's five thousand or ten thousand dollars, or whatever's a reasonable number.
I think it should cover whatever testing the water department would have to do as well. Assuming there's, there's something there, right? The first thing we want done is the water tested. It should cover anything there as well.
David, do you have the list of what we mentioned and what you had, if you just want to, can you just read it back real quick?
Yep. So basically, we'll capture an O and M plan, a mitigation plan, spell out fines and penalties, have a notification process, and also make sure there's money for the water department to do individual tests as well. I've captured that, because I know, in reference to our peer review and having the, the, the planning board will automatically do that. That's something standard that they do. We'll capture that, but, um, but I, I know that's something that they normally do.
And this would just be in, in addition to what the building inspector and the water commissioners?
Yep. Um, does anyone have anything else? All right, is there a motion to, um, pass on the comments that David just read off?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, we have a site plan review for a, um, zoning board project, a new digital sign, eight sixty North Main Street.
So again, I put a, a Google map in here for you, um, so we'll go to that first. So on North Main Street, you could see to the right-hand side, you see that sign behind the white car? What they're going to want to do is, that's a static sign, they want to put a digital board sign just below that. Um, so we'll go back to there. Um, you could see it right there. That's exactly what they're looking to do. Um, so they'll go before the ZBA. It's an allowed through a special permit. ZBA is regulatory authority over that.
I have no issue with this. Anyone have any comments?
No issues.
I am, uh, my company does business with one store in town, and it happens to be this one, so I'm recusing myself from this.
Um, so is there a motion to, um, do you want to recommend or?
Recommend.
Sure. Um, so, I'll second. On favor? Aye. One refusal. Um, we have a list of poll workers, page forty-nine, um, that the town clerk has, um, passed along. Is there a motion to appoint the listed poll workers?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Christine Napoleon, um, has expressed interest as warden of Precinct One.
I'll make a motion to appoint Christine as warden for Precinct One.
Second there.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and Stacy Driscoll has expressed. Um, and Stacy Disco has expressed interest in the board of directors for the, um, Old Colony Elder Services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We have a few vacation carryover requests, um, all are allowed, um, under the collective bargaining agreements. Um, is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have three resignations, um, one from David Church from the library trustees, one from Jeff Ryan Finance Committee, one from myself, um, for recreational space committee. Is there a motion to accept those three resignations?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just as a quick note, the library does have somebody else that is looking to serve. So we will call a joint meeting in the near future. And now we, if, if you're so inclined, you can make that appointment until the next election.
All right, thank you. Um, public comment period. Anyone have anything?
Hi.
All right, town administrators report.
Just real briefly, um, uh, annual road race that comes to a town, we signed off on that. I also received the quarterly aggregation report. I've not placed this in for some time, but I just want to, again, I want to appeal to all of our residents with national grids rates just skyrocketing. You could see in just a three-month period of time, the aggregation, um, account that the Board of Selectmen championed and signed, you have collectively saved everybody in town almost a million dollars over just three months. So it's still on our website. You go to the Board of Selectmen's page, on the left-hand side, you can go to aggregation. There's a phone number there. It literally takes less than one minute, uh, but opt in, um, save yourself some money. Um, but that's a huge, that's, you could see another, you know, fifty thousand dollars in quarter two is nice. But a million dollars, um, that's a decent amount of money, so. So I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that. And the last is, is that the fire chief is looking to have a little bit more pomp and circumstance whenever he does do a, uh, any type of promotional exam, of promotion in the future. And because this room is a little small and obviously we have other business, what he would like to do is he would like to be able to do it at the fire station, um, have food there, allow families to come in, take pictures, invite the board during those times. But he's requesting that they actually do it at the station as opposed to here, um, and just make it really comfortable for everyone.
Sounds good.
Yep.
David, just can we go back a second to the aggregation, the electrical aggregation? Is that some information you could put out onto the town's Facebook page?
Sure.
That, that's the source of in, of news around town? And it will get shared to other popular sites as well? But, because I, I do see people complaining about the rates of electricity and if we can just make it a little easier to get the information to them.
Yeah, we will. And again, I, it was important for me because everybody always says, geez, can we do something as town officials or the Board of Selectmen, you know, lower our tax bill to save us money and obviously we're limited, right? But here's something where I think the Board of Selectmen championed years ago. And, um, and by just signing up collectively, the town's saving a million dollars in a quarter. So I think this shows, you know, good leadership on your part. So we will certainly.
All right, um, with there being nothing else, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the clerical union and the police union, since in my opinion as chair strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And it's a roll, Paul Voe.
Rates, yes.
Ryan, yes.
Kenny, yes. We're in, in executive session.